Alderman to order, if you would, please recite the pledge of allegiance with me.
No speaker at all?
Test, 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 you got it now?
The United States of America.
And to the Republic which it stands, one nation
under God.
indivisible, with liberty
and justice for all.
All right, thank you, roll call please.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff is excused, Mayor's airing.
Present, thank you, we have a quorum. We have no ceremonial matters and no public participation this evening. We will move on to the approval of minutes for the Board of Aldermen regular meeting, November seventeenth. Those were in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Davidson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes will stand. Next, we have approval of the minutes for the Board of Aldermen work session from November seventeenth, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Alderman Fauch with a second from Alderman Turner, I believe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those will stand. Moving on to our agenda items, first item, agenda item is Council Bill seventy-five.
Council Bill seventy-five is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, to authorize the Harrisville Fire Department to write off a series of designated uncollectible debts pursuant to Council Bill seventy-five. Oh, sorry, resolution Council seventy-five.
Thank you, Jeremy?
Good evening, Mayor Board. The write-offs that you see in front of you tonight are the most recent this year write-offs for unfortunately deceased patients of the Harrisville Fire Department. And as so, those debts have become uncollectible, and this is the write-off to clear those off the books. If there's any other questions, I or Chief Sullivan could potentially answer those.
Any questions for Chief Sullivan?
I'm sorry, what time period are these?
I believe this is the most recent year. I'd have to look at the, I didn't bring it with me.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Chaney? Is that correct? All right, roll call please.
Alderman Milner.
Yes.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Mills. Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff is excused.
All right, thank you, Council Bill seventy-five is now Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-five. Thank you, Jeremy, for that. Next up, we have the second reading of Council Bill seventy-four.
Council Bill seventy-four is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville adopting an operating budget for the City of Harrisville, Missouri for the fiscal year January one, 2026 through December thirty-one, 2026, second of Council Bill seventy-four.
All right, thank you, Administrator Ratliff.
From the first reading, we've received no inquiries, no additional questions. Just remind everyone, it's a 1.2% increase to the operating budget for funds combined.
Thank you, any questions? Any word on that?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Mills, roll call please, to approve.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff is excused.
All right, thank you, Council Bill seventy-four is now ordinance three-seven-five-three. Next up, I am going to open a public hearing that is now open on a preliminary and final plat for Washington Place, lots one through four located north of East Washington Street and West Highland Drive. Christina?
Good evening, Mayor Board. The applicant is seeking approval for their preliminary and final plats of East Washi-- uh, sorry, of Washington Place, lots one through four located north of East Washington Street and west of Highland Drive. Previous actions on this property in this area and zoning ordinance-wise include, May thirteenth, nineteen ninety-one, Board of Aldermen approved zoning ordinance eighteen-twenty-five, which established most of our current zoning districts. January eleventh, nineteen ninety-three, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance nineteen-thirty, which amended the commercial districts from the eighteen-twenty-five ordinance and created the current commercial districts. June eighth, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Aldermen, sorry, Board of Zoning Adjustments heard an application number V A R dash twenty-one dash zero-zero-five requesting a variance to the maximum residential density limit of four-point-five dwelling units per acre in section four oh five two-nine-five A three of the downtown fringe business CBD two district to allow construction for four single-family residences on a zero-point-eight-two-acre tract of land at four hundred East Washington Street. Although the variance was approved, staff can find not that, no further action was ever taken on that approval. September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance three-six-zero-two, which included changes to section four oh five two-nine-five A three and four. November twenty-first of twenty twenty-two, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance three-six-one-six, which established Appendix A land use table and removed the density language for the downtown commercial districts. November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted zero to seven to recommend approval of this item to the Board of Aldermen. Under the key issues section, it is stated that this property is currently zoned downtown fringe business CBD two district. The applicant is proposing again the preliminary and the final plat for the four lots as shown on the attached exhibits. The city's twenty-forty conference plan shows the property and surrounding area as traditional neighborhood, which are predominantly residential areas established around the original gridded street network of Harrisville adjacent to the downtown core. I want to point out, one of the key priorities for this place type includes development of new complementary buildings on existing vacant lots. Under the analysis section of the staff report, it is stated that all the utilities are located within the alley or street rights of way as shown on the preliminary plat, which is why the typical easements are not being required on the proposed plat. Additionally, it is stated that the CBD two district does not require a front yard setback, but since the properties located south across East Washington Street are zoned R-two-B and that district requires a twenty-five-foot setback, staff recommended that the applicant mimic the lots to the south, and the final plat shows that change. The final subsection under the analysis section goes over the conference of plan and gets into details, bulging each of the key priorities, I'm not going to go into all those listed there. Procedure section of the staff report includes the three key criteria for recommendation, approval, and staff's professional opinion of those, on those three items. Note that the preliminary plat is approved by resolution and the final plat is approved by ordinance. Both items are included in tonight's packet. Staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary and final plat for Washington Place, lots one through four.
Okay, well, some, any questions from the board for Christina?
Christina, I've got, I've got a question for you. Pardon me. The alley that's there, isn't that the one that goes right beside the post office? It's really not a very wide alley?
I believe that is correct.
So where, so there, there won't be any access, like on two, three, and four, from the backside?
Lots two, three, and four will access off of East Washington, and lot one is proposed to access off of South Highland Drive.
Okay, okay, that's what I was curious about.
I have a question, what about the other alley, fifteen foot, it's just grass? On the north side?
Yeah, he's asking about the one on the north.
I would say, I mean, we haven't maintained it, so it's probably grown into grass. I haven't specifically looked at that, Matt.
Turn it off. I haven't specifically looked into that, I can look into that one, but I would say if it's grown up, it's because we haven't been maintaining it or using it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't think we have, and I just didn't know if we would have an alley still, or that'd be thrown into lot one.
I'm guessing the question you're, you're looking for here is whether staff needs to consider that alley to be vacated or not?
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll need to try, take a closer look at the utilities, they may, we may need to leave an easement for them if there's, but yeah, we can come back with that later.
What size of homes are going to be put on these?
I believe they're going to be similar to some of the ones that were built over there close to the police department. They might be slightly larger, I don't have the exact on those. I know right now is that property's been vacant for quite some time.
Yeah.
I remember the house that used to be there.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing, is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak on this? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we will take up Council Bill seventy-six.
Council Bill seventy-six is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville approving the preliminary plat of Washington Place, Washington Place, lots one through four located on the north of East Washington Street and west of Highland Drive on property located at four hundred East Washington Street in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right. There's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Alderman Franklin for approval, a second from Alderman Milner.
Milner.
Yep. Roll call please.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills. Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff is excused.
All right, thank you, Council Bill seventy-six is now Resolution twenty-two-five thirty-six. Next, we have the first reading of Council Bill seventy-seven.
Council Bill seventy-seven is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville approving a final plat for Washington Place, lots one through four located north of East Washington Street and west of Highland Drive on property located at four hundred East Washington Street in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, first, first reading of Council Bill seventy-seven.
All right. I think that's all we knew is the first reading, correct? We're going to bring that back, that'll come back for the second reading on December fifteenth meeting. All right. Next, we have a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing for code amendments pertaining to complete streets continued from October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, Christina?
Thank you, sir. Section here. As stated, this item was continued from two different groups. It was continued from the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning and Zoning Commission, when staff was asked to take a closer look at the listed regulatory agencies, consider reducing traffic length with, and reach out to counterparts in other cities that have implemented complete streets, and of course, from the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five Board of Aldermen, where it was continued for tonight's meeting. On November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard updates pertaining to this item and voted seven to zero to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen. So, within this, staff is proposing code amendments that seek to implement the city's complete street policy, which was adopted on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Staff attempted to reach out to local traffic engineer and discuss more with Public Works. The street department supervisor recommended lowering the minimum width of traffic lanes for local streets from twelve to ten feet, and caught a few other items in section four-ten, point four-ninety, point C and D that needed to be corrected, so those are encapsulated in here. He also recommended changing the minimum design speed for arterials from forty mile per hour to, to thirty-five mile per hour to match some existing arterial speed limits. The evening prior to Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, staff received comments from the Director of Engineering. He stated that, and I'm quoting here, "The street widths are to be in accordance with the Kansas City Metropolitan Chapter of the American Public Works Association, A P W A, section fifty-two-hundred, latest edition, which defines the minimum width of travel one lane excluding curb and gutter to be twelve feet for residential local, and the minimum width of travel one lane excluding curb and gutter to be ten-point-five to twelve feet for residential access." End quote. He referenced a table P dash one, general street design criteria. However, this table appears to be from the City of Peculiar's Design and Construction Manual that was copied from the City of Lee Summitt's Design and Construction Manual in twenty sixteen. Additionally, staff's found that section fifty-two-hundred of the Kansas City Metropolitan Chapter of the American Public Works Association, known as K C A P W A, was eliminated by a vote of their membership on December fourteenth, twenty eighteen, making reference to that basically null and void. The previous version was last updated in nineteen ninety-six. Staff has concluded that this is likely why many of the communities in the surrounding area have adopted portions of these standards within their own design construction manuals or within their city codes. So after comparing the nineteen ninety-six K C A P W A, Peculiar's twenty-sixteen Design and Construction Manual, and Lee Summitt's section fifty-two-hundred of their design and construction manual, which they last updated in twenty twenty-three, staff has made additional changes, and these are reflected in the markups in the packet, packet page ninety-five, contain most of those changes. Staff does note, under the key issues section of the staff report, that a good next step would be the development of a design and construction manual that could better address the myriad of design considerations involved with complete streets. I've looked at so many of them, but there are just too many possibilities, and they get really down into the weeds and the details that, that design and construction manuals would better address. Under the analysis section of the staff report, the changes included in this amendment are discussed, the addition of various definitions pertaining to complete streets, some from the policy, the addition of references to relevant governing criteria pertaining to complete streets. That was one of the things that the Planning Commission did not like, the, the use of the word "design guidelines", so that's why you see that struck in there, and I, I basically revised that whole section after I struck that word. The addition of requirements under both the Design Standards Article and the Public Improvements Article of the subdivision regulations for developments with new streets to include complete street elements. The addition of exceptions for the requirement of complete street elements, which is directly from the policy. The correction of code reference and changes to the minimum, required minimum sidewalk width from four feet to five feet. Additionally, staff has noticed, and this came, of course, after the packet, so I apologize, some language was added to the staff report, which should have also made its way into the markup, and for this reason, I am proposing adding the following to section four-ten, point three, sorry, five-thirty, point B, in front of the last sentence, which is packet page ninety-five, quotes, ADA brick pavers shall be, in parentheses, dark brick red, closed parentheses, in color, manufactured by Tile Tactile Systems, model number colonial red or equivalent. So that is the only other change that's not in here that I'm adding that is referenced in the staff report, but did not make it into the amendments, and when I was re-reviewing, I thought, this doesn't make any sense, so I, I added that. So with those changes in the packet and the one I just explained, staff is recommending approval.
All right, any questions for Christina from the board?
Christina, do these changes have any application to any current projects?
Anything that's already been reviewed and approved would be fine, they'd stay whatever they were previously approved under. This, of course, would be for anything new coming in after this is passed. So it would not be effective until the ordinance goes into effect, if approved, on the fifteenth, would be effective the next day.
Okay, good question.
Anybody else? All right, this is a public hearing, is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak on this? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thanks for all your work on that, Christina, it sounds like you had to do some digging, so that was good. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the first reading of Council Bill seventy-eight.
Council Bill seventy-eight is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, amending sections four-one-zero-point-zero-one-six-oh, four-one-zero-point-three-two-oh, four-one-zero-point-three-five-oh, four-one-zero-point-four-five-oh, four-one-zero-point-four-seven-oh E, four-one-zero-point-four-nine-oh B, four-one-zero-point-four-nine-oh C, four-one-zero-point-four-nine-oh D, and four-one-zero-point-five-three-oh B, under chapter four-ten subdivision regulations entitled Four Land Use Regulations of the Harrisville Municipal Code and Establishing an Effective Date, pursuant to Council Bill zero-seven-eight.
All right, thank you, sir, we will bring that back for the second reading on our December fifteenth meeting. Next up, I'm going to open another public hearing on code amendments to section four-zero-five-point-five-six-five-point-E-point-three, improvement of parking areas, section four-oh-five-point-five-seven-zero, residential design standards, and Appendix A land use table, Christina?
With this amendment, staff is proposing code amendments that seek to provide an alternative hard surface for industrially zoned properties only, and only for those areas utilized as storage, not including entry or exit drives and any required customer or employee parking areas. Create minimum design standards for construction of one and two-family residential dwellings, and allow a modular home to be utilized in any zoning district that allows a single-family dwelling, provided that it is on a permanent foundation. I'm going to cover most, but not all of the previous actions. Previous actions here, August sixteenth, nineteen seventy-eight, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance eleven-ninety-four, which established several of our current zoning districts, and established much of the language pertaining to the improvement of parking areas. May thirteenth, nineteen ninety-one, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance eighteen-twenty-five, which established most of our current zoning districts and allowed uses. November nineteenth, two thousand nine, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance thirty-one-zero-seven, which contained the following changes pertaining to the improvement of parking areas, changed the person able to grant extension from the city administrator to the Director of Codes Administration, and provided an exception quoted here within the packet, existing properties or businesses with gravel parking lots that have been vacant or closed for ninety days or more may have drive and parking lots of chip and seal on a four-inch compacted stone base in lieu of asphalt or concrete and curbs and will not be required. End of that quote. November five, twenty eighteen, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance thirty-four-fifty-two, which amended the language regarding improvement of parking areas to further refine the allowed exceptions to the hard surface requirement. November twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance three-six-one-six, which added several definitions to chapter four-oh-five and established the Appendix A land use table. October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance three-six-six-nine, establishing certain design standards for apartments, commercial, and industrial developments. March fourth, twenty twenty-four, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance three-six-eight-five, which corrected several references from Director of Codes Enforcement and Code Enforcement Director and Code Enforcement to building official or director of community development as appropriate. October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, staff discussed bringing the proposed code amendments pertaining to residential design standards, allowing modular in the same districts as single-family dwellings, and looking at an alternative hard surface for use only within residentially zoned properties and only on those portions utilized for storage. Again, not the entry or exit drives or customer or employee parking areas. November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen. Under the key issues section of the staff report pertaining to pavement, staff has received several inquiries for development on industrially zoned properties for storage associated with various industrial use-related items. The hard surfer, hard surface requirement has been noted to be a deterrent to those potential developments. Several of our existing industrial users have gravel on their lot despite the fact that the hard surface requirement has been on this, in the city's municipal code since nineteen seventy-eight. And pertaining to modular homes, Harrisville's current municipal code only allows modular homes to be placed on property zoned estate E or manufactured home park, R-one-M districts. Most other communities allow modular homes to be placed in any district that allows single-family provided the structure is placed on a permanent foundation. So under the analysis section of the staff report, it's reiterating basically the amendment seeking to address the concern pertaining to industrial development and the hard surface requirement. Create minimum design standards for the construction of one and two-family residential dwellings, and allow for a modular home to be utilized in any district that allows a single-family dwelling, provided, again, that it is on a permanent foundation. Specifically, the change to the hard surface requirement, as mentioned, is only for industrially zoned properties and only for storage areas. Again, like I said, does not include any of the drives or the parking areas. Those would still be required to utilize the hard surface requirement of section four-oh-five-five-six-five-E-three-A. Additionally, the proposed residential design standards are based upon staff's review of approximately a hundred and seventy one-and-two-family residential permits that were issued between October first, twenty fifteen, and October first of twenty twenty-five. See the attached one-and-two-family dwellings images in the packet. Staff did receive immediate feedback after it was posted for planning and zoning from the Kansas City Regional Association of Realtors, and truly appreciates their interest and willingness to work together to assure that the design standards proposed will encourage the use of durable materials, allow for facade articulation and differentiation, and enhance the overall aesthetics of our neighborhoods while allowing flexibility in design. So there's been revisions to the original creation that was, what, what's in the packet here is what's in the packet from planning and zoning, because we immediately had that conversation and made those revisions. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed code amendments as presented.
Awesome. Thank you for all your work on that, and I know you've been busy with all of those issues, so, and have educated us very well on it. We appreciate it. Any questions for Christina from the board?
I have a question. So, on the modular homes, if, if a homeowners association prohibited that, does the, this ordinance supersede that, or how does that work?
No, we, the city does not get involved with the HOAs, so if there's a restriction on the property that would not allow it, they, how they would be able to build such a thing then?
Do HOAs supersede city?
City does, the city cannot enforce CCRs of any HOA, we can only enforce our ordinance. So if they have an HOA that prohibited that type of development being there, then that HOA would have to act to stop any type of modular home going in there. City couldn't do it if we have an ordinance that allows it.
So the city's the first in enforcement on that. However, the HOA can, could allow it, or they could, obviously, within the HOA, block it by not allowing it in the HOA.
But that would be between them.
That would be between them.
The city couldn't enforce that.
All right.
The city attorney is shaking, he said yes.
Good questions. Oh, and Stephen can't.
Covenants and restrictions run between the property and the HOA, and so unless it's against our ordinance, it would be up to the HOA, HOA to enforce because that covenant and restriction runs to them, not to the city.
Got you. All right, thank you for that clarification. All right, if there's nothing else from the board, is there anybody that says a public hearing, anybody here this evening that would like to speak to this? Looks like we got a couple, maybe. All right. Go ahead and give us your name and address.
I'm Daniel Stone, thirty-one oh five North, Highway two ninety-one. I own Three Stone Homes. We have bought Newcastle Homes that's existed here, you know, for fifty years. About four years ago, kind of just changed over the names. Also operate a dealership in Rogersville, Missouri, just to the east side of Springfield. Between both of those locations, we do more modular homes than any other individual dealership anywhere in the state. You know, generally, it's one and two, and has been for a number of years, so I'm very well familiar with modular homes. has been for a number of years, so I'm very well familiar with modular homes and kind of, uh, the pros and, um, and cons, and, and so I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about this. Generally, uh, when I come before, uh, any sort of, of government officials, it's generally about a manufactured home, not a modular home. Harrisonville's very unique in that it's having a modular home approved inside of a mobile home park as one of its only, uh, placements, where you can't actually put a modular home, because it does not have a title. Um, it's not personal property. It's completely different. It's not a manufactured home. It's not built to HUD code. It's built to IRC code, NEC code, IACC code. It's just like a site-built home, held to the same standards, goes through three different engineering processes, um, is certified by the state of Missouri, uh, and must be, like, uh, when you say it must be on a permanent foundation, it cannot be placed on anything other than a permanent foundation, otherwise it violates the engineering upon which it was approved by the, the state of Missouri on. So, uh, I believe, uh, 2021 supersedes, or is it above what is currently the required minimum standard, you know, for the city of Harrisonville as well, but say we have different jurisdictions that they would adopt, uh, say 24, you know, um, NEC code. While any of the local jurisdictions, we would have that, that home built to the, the state minimum, which is now, was last year updated to 2021, or, uh, any more restrictive code that, you know, a local jurisdiction would require. Um, so I don't know, um, if Christina provided those pictures, you know, and different ones that, uh, of different, um, you know.
I think you provided that at the last meeting, right? Is that the ones you provided at the last meeting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, you know, pretty much, there was a, there was probably 100 different pictures of, of site-built, you know, homes, uh, across Harrisonville, and almost none of them would be difficult to be replicated inside of, of a modular home structure. I mean, there, there's a high degree of, of complexity that we do, um, from multi-story, from, um, uh, multiple widths, uh, to, you know, simple structures, and I think all the pictures kind of bear out all those different, you know, build sides. Um, most people don't know about, about modular homes. Like I said, it's three different engineering sides. You know, it has to be drawn up local by the, the local PE, you know, from that manufacturer, has to be sent and certified by a third party, um, that then sends that to the state of Missouri for their ratification before the plan can build that, to make sure that all the components of that, of that home meet the criteria for the state of Missouri. So, um, it, it's, again, it's completely different than a manufactured home, and I think most people, uh, unfortunately, they both start with M, and, and, uh, one comes on a carrier, one comes on a chassis, and people get them confused, you know, uh, but the vast majority of the times, probably 90% of the times, you know, we, we have that home, we take it with a crane, put it onto a basement, you know, crawl space, whatever it may be. Um, you know, uh, but there are some, you know, similarities, or other than that they're built inside of a structure, not, they don't share any of the requirements, shouldn't say any, um, that they, uh, are built to different codes. You know, and so, uh, what Christina, I think, has went through is, is what we're used to operating where else in the state is, is you just, whatever you would require of a site-built home, you require of a modular home. You know, uh, it's, it's one another's side.
And thank you again for
Yep.
The last meeting is very educational. We appreciate you bringing that up, so.
Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else want to talk, speak? No? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will move on to the first reading of Council Bill 79.
Council Bill 79 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending sections 405.565e and 405.570 under chapter 405 zoning regulations in the title Four Land Use Regulations of Harrisville, Missouri Municipal Code and establishing an effective date. First read of Council Bill 79.
All right, thank you, sir. We will bring that back for a second reading on our December 15th meeting. All right. Thank everybody for their work on that. Uh, next up, we have Aldermen and Committee Reports. Let's start with Alderman Franklin.
Okay, I just want to remind you.
Uh, we, we can't hear you. You just went out on us.
Today started our 12 Days of Santa Claus.
Oh, now you're muted, same. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, today starts the first day of the 12 Days of Santa Claus with the Harrisonville Parks and Recreation and the Dog Park Committee. Uh, today was our day for the certificate for a spay and neuter of a dog drawing, so we are going to be changing those each and every day, so, uh, we've got them posted on the Harrisonville Parks and Recreation page, uh, the Dog Park Committee page, uh, all of the members, and, uh, the different businesses that have helped to donate for this. Uh, we have got the Harrisonville Animal Clinic, and the Harrisonville Animal Shelter, and Prairie Tales and Spas, and Walmart, so, uh, be sure and look and keep up with what we have going each day, and see if there is a need, and if you are in need of that particular item, please get your, uh, raffle tickets in. It's five raffle tickets per family, and we will have our drawing on, uh, December 19th, I believe. So, uh, that's all I have, other than I wanted to thank the road crews for being out today and clearing all the roads, and making sure that everyone was safe in all their travels, uh, through the, the neighborhoods and up on the highways as well. So, thank you for a job well done, as always.
All right, thank you, Alderman Franklin. Thank you for all your work that you do there as well. All right, Alderman Milner.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Turner?
I have nothing.
Okay, well, let's go on. Alderman Chaney?
I have no, nothing much. Um, did I see it's your birthday soon, Mr. Rutherford? So, what, two days or something? Happy birthday to you. That's all I want to say. Other than that, it's definitely winter time, so slow down, be nice, kind, good.
Take your time. All right, thank you. Alderman Davidson?
Well, Alderman Chaney kind of started it, uh, obviously with the roads and the weather the way it is. Uh, please, um, you're gonna have emergency crews out there. I was, I was out quite a bit today, uh, traveling, and, um, saw quite a few accidents. Obviously, the first major snow, or I say major, but snow of the season. Please slow down, um, uh, watch out for emergency crews, um, because obviously, they're out there doing their job, and, um, every year, we seem to have, um, uh, people going too fast, especially at the beginning of the season. They're going too fast, lose control when they see the lights, and we have officers and highway department officers hit, and sometimes seriously injured and killed. So, please, uh, take it slow, be safe, and, uh, continue to, um, follow the rules of the road, but also, uh, slow down when needed, so.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Mills?
Christmas on the square Saturday, I'll be here. Otherwise, I think it's been covered.
Driving the train?
I am.
All right. Alderman Fouch?
Well, as long as we're on the Christmas theme, I think, uh, a plug for Shop With A Cop. I think the police department is looking for donations to help, uh, buy gifts. That's December 13th, 13th, right? River Club's gonna be back there wrapping hundreds of presents, so those kids pick out, so. Support the police department and the, uh, the kids that they support.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, next we have the report from the city administrator.
Uh, I was mentioning about the Christmas on the square. Good news for all of you, it's supposed to be warmer. And, uh, South Service Center, Sure Project staff met, uh, our meeting was December 3rd, out there with the charity bond, and, uh, sure, law staff, engineer, and as well, to discuss that punchline item. Uh, road's due extension, um, we have got the surveys in, just received the surveys, uh, on the property today, about 5:15 tonight, and so we're moving forward with that. Project James Street, the Blueberry Drive, stormwater drainage improvements, they're buttoning that project up, hopefully during the next, uh, couple of weeks, that'll be completed. If you haven't been out there, it's pretty impressive to see what they got done with that project. Uh, Ash, uh, Street Bridge over Town Creek, um, they are, uh, getting that with the covert arch bridge, uh, set, and the ion beams, H-beams, the black beams, H-beams were set, uh, last week, and concrete poured, uh, for that project, and that's, again, impressive for the project to go out there and watch as well. The concrete, incurred gutter program along, uh, Commercial Street, North Commercial Street, continues to move along, uh, Highway, uh, Missouri Highway 2, uh, our engineer Owen has submitted the response to the flood development permit with an O.R.I.S. certificate that was requested. Hopefully, we'll be hearing back from that fairly quickly. Uh, the airport obstruction, uh, tree removal projects, the staff plan to take the, the ordinance on the grant to the board here at the next meeting. Uh, the I and I program, uh, city staff are planning to advertise and bid the project in early, uh, February of 2026, and then, um, city staff has recommended HDR to continue work on the scope of service fees for the project, the wall, wall water transmission main, and wall water pumping station. The Parks Department, the, uh, T-Mobile project has been wrapped up. Is that right, Grant? We're, we're completely wrapped, we got a few more.
We gotta paint the railings, so we got that way.
So we got the railings left to paint, maybe too cold to paint it right now. And, uh, but that, that project, if you haven't went out there and looked at, it's really nice how that turned out, uh, on that project. We appreciate T-Mobile for that, the grant. Uh, Donaldson Heating and Cooling installed three new HVAC units out of the community center. If you seen people asking about cranes last week, which we did, that's what that was about. And then they, uh, the staff cleared some tree line along the Monday final trail, uh, to prevent walls from falling on the people's fences, which probably would happen today if we ended up on that one. Uh, Berchley's Fourth Platte construction plans have been reviewed and returned to the developer and his engineer. Uh, Cedar Creek construction drawings have been reviewed and are under review. MMT technology, their final development plans, a stormwater management plan has been received from the developers, and the city staff are currently, uh, having that under review. Between those, if the jack stack continues to move forward, as well as this MMT, you're looking at a traditional, over 100 jobs coming to them, uh, as a result of those two projects alone. And then, uh, as it was talked about, the snow event, staff's been out, city, city crews about since six o'clock this morning, uh, working, uh, through the day, hopefully, here within the next hour or so, uh, completing a lot of the streets. We're gonna have to go back tomorrow to hit some of the areas where there's cars parked, and where there's, uh, coat sacks, to be able to get those cleaned out a little bit better. But with the temperature coming up tomorrow, uh, that should help out in a lot of those efforts. With that, Mr. Rutherford, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Lot going on still. Questions from the media? Thank you for being here, sir. With that, I will enter, entertain, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion.
Motion from Alderman Davidson, with a second from Alder, Alderman Chaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. We'll take about, uh, five, 10 minutes most.